I call to word of the Town of Old Saybrook zoning commission regular and hybrid meeting of Wednesday, January 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, second floor conference room, at 302 Main Street, Old Saybrook. Seated tonight, that's me, Bob Friedman Chair, Mark Calderella Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis Secretary, Regular Commission members Mark La Monaco and Anne Marie Thorson, also President Ultimate John Henry, we're joining Enforcement Officer Chris Costa, Port Joanne Bailey, and one person.
Dave.
David Carswell. Thank you.
And we also have speakers.
Two people online. First, Doc Costa. And Winnie Juncarella.
Everybody.
All right.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is minutes of our meeting, December 5th, 2022. Any additions are correct?
They look good. Did you find something? What did you find?
Nothing. I found nothing.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December 5th.
Second, all right, Jerry Lewis. Except the minutes of December 5th as presented, seconded by Mark DeMonico. How is discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of December 5th, 2022, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five unanimously, five in favor. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Oh, we have a greeting card from Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates and Land Survey and Technical Services. They've been in business for 50 years.
I'm good.
Any other correspondence? Then we have election of officers. The floor will be open for nominations for chair.
I'll nominate Bob Friedman as chairman.
Second. Is there a second? Jerry Lewis nominates me, Bob Friedman, for chair, seconded by Mark Calderella. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations for chairman?
Summer.
Mark and Jerry making second motion to close nominations for chair. And then is there a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for the only nominee? So moved. Mark Calderella moves to cast the unanimous ballot for Bob Friedman for Chairman of the Zoning Commission for 2023. The seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously 5-0-0. Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to nominate Mark Calderella for Vice Chairman.
I'll second that nomination. Then further nominations for Vice Chair for the Zoning Commission at 2023. None appearing. I'll move that nominations for Vice Chair be closed, seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion on the motion to close nominations? None appearing. All in favor of closing nominations for Vice Chair?
My.
5-0-0. That motion carries. I'll make a motion to declare unanimous ballot for Mark Calderella for Vice Chair of Zoning Commission for 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Motion carries unanimously. Mark Calderella, Vice Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob.
Nominations for Secretaries. Any nominations? Jerry Lewis. I'll second that. Mark Calderella nominates Jerry Lewis for Secretary, seconded by Bob Friedman. Any further nominations? None appearing. I'll move nominations be closed, seconded by Mark DeMonico. All in favor of closing nominations for Secretaries, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'll make a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Jerry Lewis for Secretary of the Zoning Commission in 2023, seconded by Mark Calderella. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
5-0-0. Motion, Jerry Lewis. Oh, gets unanimously voted in as Secretary of the Zoning Commission for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up on the agenda is public hearings. Romanum R. V, a workshop to discuss drive-through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments, especially in Section 53. The moratorium is currently in force. Is that right, Chris?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. And this extent, the moratorium extends until April 28th of 2023. Purpose is to discuss drive-through operations with guest speakers. David Carswell, Winnie Juncarella, Paul Allen, and Chris Doc Costa. Yes, so have you, you've given, Chris Costa, our CEO, has given you some background information. And we're asking for some real world, on the ground, boots-on-the-ground type issues, concerns, and recommendations, if you might have some, for what might be useful in our determination of regulating drive-through windows. We have three different kinds.
That's a lot, yeah. So just to give you guys a bit of a background on myself, myself and my family, we own and operate 80 Dunkins, including many in Connecticut, Westbrook, Old Saybrook, we acquired this year. The prior owner was a resident in town and an old friend. And he retired. So we are in Westbrook and Clinton. We kind of pepper the shoreline Madison. My job specifically is what we're talking about. Remodels, new builds, relocations, that whole thing. So I'm very familiar with a lot of, you know, the process with the towns and what they like and don't like and what we see. I wasn't really prepared in terms of, you know, what you guys were looking to hear. I know I'd spoken to Chris. Certainly happy to answer any kind of questions. I mean, in terms of what we're doing today, and again, I speak for Dunkin', I can't speak for, you know, CVS is a much different footprint and size and as our banks. For us, you know, COVID has really increased the importance of drive-through. It was always, you know, it was always king prior, but it's really just kind of moved it forward. And we are seeing a lot of towns are a bit warmer to the, you know, to the idea, because it's something that people want, especially something like COVID. Even the Board of Health, there's less touch and all that type of, and all that type of thing. We are probably are the biggest change for us in terms of building, as we are building now, if it's new construction, we're generally looking at smaller footprint and really doing a lot of drive-through-only stores. You know, the walk-in, the walk-in business is sliding. You know, people don't want to talk to anybody. If it is walk-in, they want to use the app and get out. And we're noticing that seating in stores isn't as important. You know, in some cases, it's a hindrance, because the drive-through being, the window being so important for us, we're predicated on speed. You know, when you have just the window that your whole team is focused on, you operate that much faster. You know, there's one, you know, if you walk into a Dunkin', you have the front counter, and you need some people doing that, and you have the drive-through, and you need someone doing that. And now we even have the on-the-go portion, which is, you know, the printer for the app, for people coming in, picking up and leaving. So we have really three points of access now. And we're finding that we're better when it's one, as you would expect, when it's when it's one place. And we're seeing operationally, it's easier to operate in a drive-through-only environment. And the sales are in a similar place. You know, the the other, the other part of it is the, is just the metrics. I mean, you know, we've closed, we've closed eight stores last two years, and we have a slate of more of walk-in-only locations, you know, in your area particularly. It's tough when you're on the shoreline. You're really busy, you're busy, busy in the summertime. Not so much Old Saybrook, maybe a bit further down, but you know, you certainly have a jump in the summer, but you know, we're still sustainable. But these seasonal stores, you need to make all your money in a three-month window. In a walk-in store, you can't. Gas stations are closing, smaller walk-in stores are closing. We always, you know, approach towns about the idea of a drive-through. Just sometimes it doesn't work, you know, and we can understand that if it's in a residential area of what that may be. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're looking to do, you know. It's a lot of what I do today is that piece of the business is relocating to assets with windows. The, I think, drive-throughs in a parking lot is becoming more popular, especially with what you guys do. Nobody wants a stack on the street. And the parking lot kind of cancels that in the sense of, of course, if you have the proper stacking. So we're seeing a bit more of that. You didn't used to see that. We used to have shops in Orlando and these bigger footprints, that's very common. But in the Northeast, it's not so easy with such smaller size, you know.
What square footage do you have in mind? Square footage, smaller, what?
For the building?
Yes.
For the building, so we can do, we have some, there are some concepts that have 800 square feet to 1,200 would be a drive-through is all we need today. Yeah. Yeah.
800 to 1,200. But we have at present a minimum commercial building size of 750 square feet, and 800 would be compatible with that. And remember, from our perspective, this is about the long view of the land use. And should a business decide to vacate, the, what they leave behind has to be useful for something else. I guess unless they tore it down to the ground, but that's not often done. And we use Dunkin' Donuts as an example. In Old Saybrook, of the former Dunkin' Donuts was left as a building that got remodeled to the degree that it was no longer a trademark building. That's another issue that we have in Old Saybrook. Trademark building is a sign. And so your colorful orange and pink DD items, accoutrements on the outside become a sign, because nobody else can do that, and it's commercial speech. And so what you've talked about so far, in terms of building size, would be compatible. The issues that we're considering have to do with pedestrian node in Old Saybrook runs along Route 1. And that's, we're installing sidewalks. We have some sidewalks. We're installing more sidewalks to encourage pedestrian use along Route 1. We have determined that drive-through windows generate vehicular traffic that has to cross the sidewalk. And so we're, we're looking to minimize vehicle pedestrian interactions on those sidewalks, where they are and where they will be. And then we also have the, as you know, with the newly opened Dunkin' Donuts drive-through at Smithfield Farms.
Smithfield.
Yeah, there, the stacking space is at times inadequate and reaches the pedestrian areas. So we are looking to address that issue with any future drive-through applications. One view would be to put all the drive-through traffic and stacking for entering the transaction and for exiting, put it all on the lot. So that's your problem, not the pedestrians' problem, and not the state Route 1 problem. And so that, that's one idea that we have based on real-life experience. With regard to Starbucks, over in East, yes.
Oh, yes, Chris. I mean, overall, a question I have, I think, for everyone is that I know Chris runs the new Dunkin' Donuts, and we're talking about, we've got drive-through lanes where people ordering, we have drive-through lanes where people are merging in for pickup. And what, what do you think works and doesn't work with the current Dunkin' or these current sites are things you feel we're going to see more? I know you briefly discussed stacking, because more people are not going to go into the building. What are your thoughts on how the industry is changing in your actual operation through those windows?
Right.
And Chris Costa, by the way, the other.
Regulations allow a drive-through window, one and a, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's not accessory. It's called something else. It's like a subsidiary window. And so you have one.
Mobile order handoff. That's what that is. So like a mobile, mobile handoff. So you can still drive up, get out of your car, get the thing, and come back. So that's the term that they use, yes.
The thought was that the first window would be for the transaction, and the second window would be for product delivery. That's not, not how it works, is that? No?
So, so the shop in Old Saybrook, I think that was, I think we opened that one, I think it was open in 2019. It was a bit of a prototype. I know the brand had built that one with Randy. A lot of times, so a lot of times on the, on the go with the drive-through, it's not as popular. So, or any of the deliverables. So for instance, Uber Eats and DoorDash and Grubhub. If I'm, if I'm driving for Uber Eats and I'm picking up a Dunkin' order, I don't want to go to a drive-through store, because I'm going to just wait anyway, you know, in the line even getting to that window. You can't just cut everybody off. A lot of times, you have, like, on the drive-through concept, a lot of what we have, so when I say, and I apologize, when I say drive-through only, usually, so I'm building one today in Massachusetts, and it is a drive-through only, and you walk, there's essentially a vestibule. We have one similar, in Clinton, we have one similar, it wasn't done as well. But essentially, you walk in, and you have maybe a, you know, it's maybe 14 by 10 area, and you'll have, for customers that want to walk in and order on a kiosk, you can do so, which isn't, hasn't really taken as much, but it is a pickup area. So if you're on your phone, you can place your order, and you can just open the door, you grab it, and you're out. So that kind of satisfies, in certain areas where, like a plaza, where maybe some people like walking to the supermarket next door, and they want to grab a coffee and hit the supermarket, they can still walk in and walk out as long as they have the app. The kiosks are in place, you know, McDonald's is doing them. They're not as popular for us at this time. So we do, so when I say a drive-through only, they generally are starting to come with some kind of an application to satisfy. The window you speak of, the dual window, is not often seen. It's, you know, a lot of times, again, because of the, how it merges on the line, it doesn't, we haven't seen that it really works with that second pickup window. The idea is there. Hasn't been, from what I've seen, the execution hasn't been, hasn't been there. Because, because a lot of people don't go to a drive-through store for a pickup.
Right.
So you don't have that demand. You know, if I'm picking up, I don't want to go to a drive-through store. I'll go down the street to one, second, park, and walk in and grab it.
So it's shopping by appointment, and it's operating sort of like a vending machine? You drive up, and there's, and there's some form of payment, electronic or whatever, and you take your stuff out of the box that it's in, and you drive away.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm sure that's a different concept from when our existing regulations were written down.
Yeah, I, you know, folks, I'm just kind of telling you what, what it is and what we're seeing from the brand and kind of how we're trying to evolve, you know, how it's evolving, you know. What you guys specifically approve or don't do is, no, it's not, that's not really for me to say.
Well, it's helpful to understand the operation. So thank you.
Chris, and Winnie, what do you see for the requirement of stacking?
Well, I have a, I have a phenomenal case at my store in East Lime. The worst stacking situation incurred, man. Maybe you guys have ever been there. But yeah, so the stacking situation, you know, one of the challenges we run into, and again, East Lime used to be, you know, literally a visitors' building. And so it's not designed for what it has been created for. So one of the issues with stacking, like you had said, is that you have to really watch the traffic flow and the pattern, because you will, and we've had car accidents in our, in our parking lot. We've incurred issues with people trying to back up, get out. You know, you're kind of, you're walking a fine line between, you know, people getting stuck in those lines and not being able to get out and get around. I did run the Grotten Starbucks as well for two years, and they have a seven-car stack. And what we mean by that is that the stack is how many cars are in line from the time that they order at the, and it's not even a window. It's like a speaker, essentially. How many cars are in line from the time they order at the speaker until they pick up their items for purchase? So when, when people talk about stacks, that's kind of how we refer to this back. So like East Lime has a two-car stack. So from the time that the person orders till they were, they come to the window where they're greeted, it's two cars. Most, and I would say it's probably Dunkin' Donuts has this as well, you guys try to keep the stack as long as you can, because the longer the stack, so if you got a seven-car stack, so the seventh car is talking to the speaker, ordering their food and beverages, by the time they get up to the window, it's all ready. So, because the way these things are developed inside the store, there's ovens, there's all kinds of things going on. The idea is to create an effortless flow of food and beverage as quickly as you can, so that the person's not waiting. So it's almost as if it's continually moving. It's kind of a continually moving, flowing situation. I am familiar with Old Saybrook, and I've been there, I mean, I've been in the area for 13 years, and I, I'm very familiar with the sidewalks and the setup and the buildings are pretty close together. And, you know, it is, this is a tough one. I will, you know, having that drive-through is a phenomenal thing, has been great for business. And if it's done the right way, if it's done with a lot of thought put into it, it can be a beautiful experience. But it's also, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things you have to think about, because, you know, with, like Chris said, with the advent of mobile order and pay, that's a whole nother animal in and of itself. And but the stack is essentially, and even contractors now know these terms, is how many cars, I mean, you can talk to a Starbucks contractor, and they will tell you everything, that they know everything. So one of the things that's different, like McDonald's has a window that you go up to to speak into, to talk to a person. We don't. So all of our, all of our windows, I think at Dunkin' as well, is a speaker or it's a, it's a TV. And so you're, you have some ability to, and you should always have like some ability to move out of line if you can, so that you can get out of line if needed. I can, I can tell you from working in pretty big towns, Grotton and East Lime are not small. Many of the cops will not get in the line. They will come in through the mobile order and pay, get their drinks, so they don't get stuck in line, if they need to leave quickly. So, you know, it is very tricky. One of the things that the towns will often do, in fact, our store in particular has a sidewalk, an egress of a sidewalk on both sides. And the town has decided that they wanted to cut off one of the sidewalks in order to prevent traffic accidents. So we had to put up a barrier, the town put up an actual physical barrier, so that cars cannot go over one egress. So we only have one way in and one way out, and that's it. So that's another thing to think about as far as drive-throughs. How many ways out do you have on that property? Because now we only have one way in and one way out. So it's, it's, you know, people are not happy, but.
So what, are the one-way in and one-way out the same single curb cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You come in, and then you go out. And so what happens is, and we run into this a lot, and it's, you know, I can tell you the landlord's not happy about it, but he has to, he has to deal with it. It was causing, so the two egresses, one of them during COVID, we only became drive-through because they shut the cafes down. So our cafe was shut down to come into, and we were only drive-through. And so we caused a lot of traffic pattern problems, because they, the cars went into two different, came in two different ways. So that is one of the issues that you have to look at when you're looking at the footprint of the building. Can you have a way in and a way out for cars coming in and cars coming out? And if you don't have that, which in some cases you don't, how are you going to maneuver that with the window? And how it's going to, how is it going to look realistically when you have, I mean, we do $50,000 a week in coffee in our store. So I do about 800 to 900 people a day coming through transactions. So it gets a little, it's mayhem sometimes. So that's something that, you know, when you're looking at the footprint of a building, is there, is there an access point to come in, and is there one to go out, or is it just one way in and one way out? And how, why do you need that to be? It just eliminates problems.
I'm sorry, if there is only one curb cut, so that has to function for entering and exiting the lot, then you have to circumnavigate the building, or else, or if you didn't, there would have, there would be cross-traffic on site.
Oh, yeah, we have cross-traffic, because people like to come in, park, come in, get their coffee, and then, you know, some people don't like to drive through, and some people don't like mobile order and pay. They want to come in and have the cafe experience. And then they, when they leave, they have to wait for the drive-through line, just to, for people to move and get away from each other so they can get out of their car. But this has been like this for 10 years. I mean, it's got to be 10 years now. They've never been able to change it. And it's just where the building is. But with you guys having the ability to, you know, I mean, I know, I'm familiar with Old Saybrook. So you do have some, there are areas where there's like large parking lots, where it would be a lot more feasible. But yeah, we have to do it one way in and one, like, they can, they can go against traffic, is what ends up happening.
Yeah, I also, I agree with, you know, with Winnie's comments in terms of stacking, it's the same. You know, Dunkin', if I submit a site to me today, they won't, they won't even look at unless you have at least five cars. They won't, they won't look at anything smaller. It's got to be at least five. The stacking after the menu board, you know, the more, the more is always better, because no one, we don't want, we don't want the same thing as you guys don't want. But in terms of how it works, you should write on, in terms of the stacking and how it works from the board to the thing, it's the same, same, same thing.
And some places are grandfathered in. So, you know, we're kind of stuck where we are. In fact, we were going to try to extend the drive-through, and if we tried to file a permit for that, they would remove the drive-through. So they don't want us messing with our drive-through. They were not happy about that. So we're going to stick with what we have, or else we lose it all together. And, but I will say to Chris's point, our drive-through is 60% of our business now. So it used to be like 30, 40, almost half, but not quite, because we did a lot of cafe business. Mobile order during COVID, that changed 100%. So if there are businesses that want to do drive-through, they're going to look at all of this data, which is going to show them that it's blown out of the water. I mean, it's a big change from 10 years ago, when there was a few drive-through places, but they weren't doing level of business that we are now. But, I mean, on any given day, in fact, it's pretty set. My drive-through business out the window is 60% of my business every day. So it's, it's very popular, but it can be very, very, it can, it can cause chaos too. So there's no, it has to be done with a lot of thought put into it. You know, and people that know what they're doing. Because if they're not, I mean, I'm sure Chris, after opening that many stores, you're probably very familiar with it. But a business wanting to do that has to have people that know how to do a drive-through the right way. And some places won't, it won't be, it won't be great. It'll, it'll cause more problems for you guys. But it is a very profitable situation for a business looking to open, if they can, if they can do it. I would love one in Old Saybrook. I go to Old Saybrook. I live in Lime, so I'm not that far away. But, you know, it's tricky. It's definitely tricky. But you know, that is the, there's the, the stack is an issue, the the ability to get out of line, not to be stuck. So you, so you can't get out. I've had people actually break down in our drive-through line in Grotton, and had to be towed out. I mean, it can, it can be, yeah. And had to be towed out. I mean, it can, it can be, yeah. It can be great.
We presently have three food-related drive-throughs. Right, we, we have, um, Dunkin Donuts, Dunkin, sorry. And we have McDonald's and we have Burger King. They're all in different, they're all in different, different. And so you should not use any one of them as an example of what would be allowed today in the same district. Please, don't do that. So we're trying to write the regulations so that where they will be permitted will work. Right? So I look at the, the, the way the traffic flows and the, the business. And it seems to me that the Burger King building being so far away from the curb cut. Keeps all of the business on the lot. They get to do what, whatever they want with the spacing between the. The speaker for the order and they're stacked to the windows. And that's all well and good in the back. And that would seem, based on what I've heard this evening, that would seem to be a, a preferred layout.
That's ideal. That is an ideal situation. And even, you know, honestly, even the Dunkin. Uh, near Smithland is actually not a bad, it's not bad. I mean, I, I've gotten into it before. But you can avoid other people. You, you, there is a wide girth, because you have that parking lot right there. So that isn't, I, I mean, I don't mind that one, honestly. That's, but you would wanna have minimally five car stacks. So that's one of the points. Minimally a five car stack to avoid, um.
But the, but the five car stack is, is from your point of order to pickup, right? When we look at the stack, we look at it all the way. So it's, it's prior to your five car stack.
The DOT has given us some general rules regarding stacking spaces. Under their stack concept. And they have actually broken it down to recommending, uh, a different number for Dunkin. Because, because of real-world experience. They have different stacks for different purposes and it's up to us to, uh. Assimilate all these different things and figure out what works on a particular property size, let's say.
Sure.
Well, I know that we just opened, and Chris, you might be familiar with this, but we just opened the first Starbucks that's attached to a gas station. That's drive-through only and mobile order and pickup only. There's no cafe. You cannot enter it from the gas station. You can't. Go anywhere near it. All you can do is pick up at the window in front of the gas station or you go in the drive-through. And that's in Waterford. Um, and that's a ten-car stack, if you can believe that. Um, and that was an effort to make it, you know, really a premier. Drive-through experience for the customer. Um, so I don't know what the Starbucks. You know, uh, I mean, they're. I think they're different based on the towns and where they're, you know, looking and stuff like that, but. I know they're looking at more drive-through stores. So the stacks will get, you know, expanded, um, definitely, but.
Well, Saybrook has, uh, presently, drive-throughs are only accessory uses to an indoor. Food, food service or a restaurant. And so the one you mentioned, Starbucks in Waterford would not be permitted because that would be a, a, a principal use. Without being accessory to something else. So that's part of what we're trying to get our heads around, is that the direction that's good for Old Saybrook. Uh, right now, we, we, we don't have that answer tonight, but. We're aware that it, we're aware that it's out there, right?
Yeah, I think it's different for, you know, Old Saybrook is an old town and, and it's, you know, primarily, um. You know, you have smaller buildings, you don't have big high-rises, you don't have large medical buildings, things like that. It, it's a very New England town. Um. And I think, you know, it, well, I mean, we already have a Starbucks there. It's clearly a cafe, um, but I think that. You know, even if you have. I mean, do you, are you guys in, are you in favor of doing? I know you have their accessory units right now, but.
The video is off, the mic is on.
Lost there.
Okay.
One of the, uh, one of the other points, if I can just throw out there, that I will say, that we do see sometimes, um. Concerns from especially when it's a, uh, if we're looking to put a drive-through in like an area that is somewhat resident, like residential, you know. We have some outside the city in Boston and some of these, and in Bridgeport. You know, uh, a lot of times people with Dunkin, maybe a bit different from Starbucks, but there, there are so many. You know, that people think, well, if you put one in here, it's gonna be the one that kind of, uh, it causes traffic, you know. And assuming the stacking, uh, listen, the, you guys are right on with the size of the site, you know. Not all drive-through is bad, but the site's got, it's gotta work, you know. Um, a lot of times the, the day, you know, we do all the, the studies and the traffic studies, the traffic exists today. You know, Dunkin is a, is, is, is not a destination. It's a convenience. No one's gonna go out of their way. You go to work, you pass ten of them. You don't go, you don't go towards one specifically because it's that one. You go to one, whichever one you choose on the way to work. If you make that ten, eleven. You know, again, it's kind of particular to our brain because of our throughput is our problem in such a small amount of time. Uh, it, 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 we haven't seen it ever kind of cause that, make that concern. A lot of times you're really taking cars, uh, off of the, off of the road and putting them onto a site all in the morning that are circulating. So a lot, it's, it's, it's a kind of a, a, a general, like, from what I've seen and misconception, uh, in my opinion, you know, of course in. In certain neighborhoods, they, they kind of, um, you know, they want to provide data with, with traffic. We do the studies. And they always tell us, you know, we have to come back in six months and provide an updated study and we never get there. When I call, they say, don't worry about it because there is no, the, the traffic is already existing. Again, I'm not speaking so much for. For Old Saybrook, but just kind of something else that we see sometimes. It's tough to say when you go through the process. Um, you know, people want the data and we understand that and we do the studies, but. It is a lot of times, again, you're, you're on the way, you're, you're, that's the way you're going anyway. We just put one on the way that, that is on the way to where you're going as it is. No one's going out of their way. Maybe like a Chick-fil-A, if there's only one in the area, that's gonna draw. Everybody's gonna go there. There's only one. It's, it's a destination. For us, we're, you know, you just pick which one you want on the way. You know, it's a bit, it's a bit different in that regard.
Can I just ask one question before we? How do you handle? The issue of people with the mobile orders merging with the people ordering at the drive-through? I, I know there's kind of a. People told me as they go through the Dunkin, here Dunkin in Old Saybrook. That people will cut people off, but then buy the person behind them a coffee. I mean, how does that, how does that work? I mean, does it cause people fighting or?
It's kind of what I mentioned. I mean, a bit new to the store, to that one in particular, um, you know, we've had it for six months. Uh, but it is, um, it's my opinion, in my opinion, why it doesn't work, um. That, that, that merge piece, um, you're right, the car comes in and they just wanna get their stuff and they're ready, so they kind of cut somebody else off. It's, it's kind of something that, that happens. No, there's no real. We have our job inside the four walls, which is to get everything ready and get it done as fast as we can, you know, um. It's just kind of a, it's not crazy often, you know, I mean, again, the mobile pickup on drive-throughs isn't a huge part of the business on drive-through stores. Uh, but you know, that's kind of why the merging, it's, it's difficult.
It's probably easier just to go in and pick it up than sit in the, in the line.
I'm, I'm sat in the line at Dunkin Donuts. Uh, they don't, no one cuts you off. They sit and wait for you to. Let them in. It has not ever been a problem at all. And it goes very quickly.
Cause everyone's so nice.
Uh, everyone's nice here in Old Saybrook, that's why.
Oh yeah.
About other town.
I like you, I like you.
Chris, I have a question for you. You mentioned earlier that you're, uh, designing a, a strictly a drive-through facility. Does that contain two separate, one on each side of the building for pickup windows?
No, we would, I mean, we would call that, uh, they have a double drive-through. It's a bit of a newer concept, uh. Uh, we don't have any of those on, you know, in New England, you, you need a kind of a wide space for that, a big piece of property for it. Uh, this one in particular that I'm working on, it was, it was a Santander Bank, it was a drive-through. Um, and not a huge building in a plaza, um, in a big Y, uh, uh, plaza and, um, again. Uh, just put in the window and the vestibule where again, building out a bit. So it can attract some people to come in and, uh, and, and, and grab their, they can still place. The mobile order and grab, and there is a kiosk if they choose. They can technically go in and place an order. And just wait and it'll be dropped off in the counter right in front of them, in this little, this little kind of area. That, in my opinion, is what. You listen, you can't, and it's not all of them. I mean, we're not like, you know, Starbucks still has like that, 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 uh, people that wanna sit down, you know, uh. I know, when you said she's about sixty percent, you know, Dunkin, it's, you know, we're closer. In some stores, you're around eighty percent, seventy-five. I mean, that's, it's a big, it's a big jump, you know, for us, um, because no one wants to sit inside and not as many people wanna sit inside of Dunkin. Um, that's maybe, maybe the biggest difference between the two, uh, the two brands, um. But, uh, you, we, we wouldn't do all, again, you're not gonna see all the drive-through only stores, you know, it's kind of, wanna have some, but you know, you don't need to have. Five stores in one town that all have seating. I mean, that's, that's unnecessary. So as, as it's evolving, we're changing, pulling some back and. And changing how that looks.
If you, if you had the ability to develop a site from scratch. Where there was nothing on the property and it was gonna be a drive-through only facility, how do you envision that?
Um, you know, you're, if, if it's a, somewhat of a elongated, uh, elongated piece of property. This, you know, the stack can kind of whip around and come on, almost like a U-shape, right? But you want, you want your, you want your level to be, uh, uh, deep, so, you know, so you can stack most of the amount of cars. It's kind of a tough, it's kind of a tough question to, to answer. The, and everything is. I've never really had that. No, I know, I wish I, you know, it was, we had these, the blank sheet of paper to kind of draw how we want it to look. We usually. You know, morph it to make it work as best we can, especially in so much of these tight, tight areas. It is, uh. You know, guys, New England, you know, uh, 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 you know, it's been around a long time and it is the. Thing I will say, which is not, you know, necessarily, uh, uh, what you, you guys are kind of, kind of aspire for, but. The customers always figure it out. We got some crazy, crazy drive-throughs from the old days. And they are zigzags and crossovers and somehow customers figure it out. Trust me, uh, maybe our, our, maybe our highest volume store, one of our highest volume stores. It, it's a mess and we went to the town and town wanted it. So we kind of, he said, okay, this is what you guys want. And it works. I mean, it is a mess, but it works. They, 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 they figure it out. It's like, you know. Well, it's just what it is, I mean.
Thank you.
Dave's been patient. Dave's been, Dave wants a cup of coffee. I'm Dave Carr as well, uh, manager for Guilford Savings Bank. We're located here in town at eight forty Boston Place Road. So right on a, a main thoroughfare that you're addressing tonight, all right? I think I'm gonna speak more to what. We have really in front of us, changing habits. How we're doing business and, and I applaud you as a body for addressing this. Now, if you're familiar with our location, uh. You, as a customer, as a, as a client, would enter, um, on the west side of the property. And we don't have a stacking problem. The reason we don't have a stacking problem is because. This body and the, uh, architectural review committee fifteen years ago. Uh. Ultimately, we agreed that the entrance would be to the west. And you would enter, uh, or, uh, after, after the transaction leaving the, uh. Drive-through. You'd exit to the north. Right. Which by the way. Old Saybrook Police Department loves to park in my parking lot. I love it. I love it. Uh, there's a reason that they love parking. Uh, nonetheless. You know, during the COVID, uh, we'll say the COVID years, the COVID pandemic, uh. Take it whatever dates you wish, but twenty twenty-one in there. Um. You know, a hundred percent of our, uh, of virtually a hundred percent of our business was done through the drive-through. We were open for business in the lobby by appointment only, okay? But COVID being what it was, the pandemic, um. A hundred percent of our business was done through the drive. There were times that cars were stacked, but the way, again, the way our property was designed, it was a non-issue. Um, yeah, to Chris's point, it was more of an issue of people having patience and things of that nature and adapting to the environment. Um. Currently, we took a, uh, a, a survey. Built some data and between, uh, from the months of June to September of twenty-two. Sixty-one percent of our business, uh, was done through drive-through, of our transactions. Done through drive-through. So again, that supports, uh, Winnie's experience. In that, uh.
Does that even include online transactions like from your computer and your phone?
So you raise a great point. Raise a great point, because digital banking, uh, has, has. You, you've got three factors, all right, three considerations. In lobby, right? Uh, drive-up. And online banking. And that.
Where does ATMs fit?
Well, the ATM frankly is in our, is in, you know, that's gonna be a lobby, a, a drive-up transaction. Because it, for us, we have dual lanes and the ATM is, uh, in the outside.
Do you have an ATM in your building?
No, we don't. Um. And that was by design. Um. But when we start talking total transactions in a given day. Uh. The digital, uh, business is tremendous. And similar to coffee, you know, you order your coffee, you go, you know, you order it online, right? And go and you pick it up. Well, uh, the digital, uh, business with banking is significant. And it's, it's gonna be changing for the future. Banks of the future are gonna be much smaller. A whole, more recent banks, uh, branches that we've opened. Uh, uh, since the pandemic, we've opened two. Their footprint is much smaller and it's to address, uh, largely the, the digital transformation that's happening. Um. We haven't, uh. We've been watching. Our business. And. And really what I want this body to think of is, is the changing habits, exactly what you, what you brought up instead. More businesses being done online, habits are changing. Uh. Before COVID, there are certain. Age groups that we would see in the branch regularly. Now, since COVID, those age groups have gotten used to driving through. They're not getting out of the car. I don't know, it's just they need hips and these replaced with what, but they, you know, they prefer drive-through. And that's, we're starting to really see, and it's, it also speaks to the. The busyness that we live each day, the amount of busy we are and the rush when we get places and do things. And so. You know, it's incumbent on businesses to. Enable society to do business the way society wants. So, uh, as far as stacking goes, um. You know, you look at Liberty Bank. We really don't have a stacking issue at Liberty Bank. They're set up similarly. And that you'd enter, uh, and have a right angle exit. They exit out onto Main Street. They've got two lanes. Periodically, well, pre-COVID periodically, they would back up. Onto, what's the side street there?
The fact that the exit is right turn only. Helps because if there were left turns involved, they would.
Oh yeah, I know that one.
Nightmare. Nightmare. And it's, sometimes it's not so easy, depending upon the time of day. It's not so easy on Route One either.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I, there was a slight backup yesterday. Just because it was a busy time on, on Route One. You look at the stacking issues for, um. Uh, Bank of America, for example, and they've got a very short ride, all right? You know, it doesn't take much for them to back up onto the side street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but all of those things are changing now and, uh, because of people's habits. And, and so I think the timing for this body to address exactly what you're talking about, it's very timely.
Now, do you see ATMs phasing out as people, I mean, people are using less cash?
Actually, um, ATMs are changing and they're becoming, uh, more modernized in that uh, some of the ATMs that are out there now are ITMs or, um, where you actually go up to the ATM, there's a screen and a live person comes on that screen and talks to you. This is not a, uh, you know, electronic image, it's a real person. But, uh, those can be standalone models where they're just buried into the side of a, of a, of an existing building. Banking is changing and that is very much in the, in the future and it's something that our bank is absolutely. It's a way to expand your footprint without terrible amount of, uh, investment.
And people can work from home and talk virtually through the side of a building to the customer.
Or you can log on and talk to a real person if you need to. And, and that's technology that we're investigating as well. Um, and so that takes digital banking one step further, but it gets, you know, that's, that's one component. It's, uh, to stress the, the static concerns.
So, uh, the, the earlier part of our meeting this evening had to do with housing. And there was a big push for Old Sabre and everyone else in Connecticut to increase housing types. And one which we are looking to increase is to have residential over commercial. Are there any examples of residential over a drive-through? I've never heard of one.
So, in full disclosure, I'm previous press, past president of Hope Partnership. And we, as you may already know, create affordable workforce housing. And so when we start talking, right, Jerry?
Yes.
So, uh, and, and again, in full disclosure, I'm chairman of the properties committee for, um, for the Hope Partnership. So, uh, along those lines, um, we, uh, just recently opened, uh, completed uh, transformation of Spencer's Corner in, uh, Centerbrook. And that's a case where we renovated three, three floors, uh, three stories of commercial property, consolidated, uh, the first floor to commercial only, uh, condominiums, first condominium office space. And the top two floors, we created, um, uh, second floor and third floor, we created, um, uh, seventeen apartments. They're beautiful.
Yes, they are.
I haven't seen them, they're beautiful. But along those, you know, there's no reason why, uh, mixed use, we're continuing, we, Hope Partnership is continuing to look at mixed-use opportunities. Um, in part because, uh, land has become so scarce or unaffordable, one of them too.
Yeah.
Um.
All the easy lands has already been.
All the easy lands gone, what's left is either unbuildable.
Yeah.
A lot of.
And we don't have sewers.
And you don't have, Old Sabre does not have sewers. Most of the shoreline does not have sewers. So, running, we can speak for another hour on this topic alone. Um, but the, uh, what's now known as the loss at Spencer's Corner is, has been, um, a, a fine example for the, uh, Connecticut Department of Housing because it is mixed-use and has been, um, very, very well received by the residents and, and the commercial. Um, look around Old Sabre, are there properties that could be transformed to mixed-use residential? Is that, is that?
I think what we're kind of thinking though is, as we go more towards mixed-use, what do we do in that situation where you have a drive-through proposal with apartments above?
It's gonna be a challenge.
And, and I mean, I don't know, Chris, do you have any, or Winnie, any experiences with apartments above drive-throughs?
Um, I, I'll be honest, guys, I, I, we don't and I, there's none I can think of, not, not, you know, you see a lot of, obviously, mixed-use is huge and cer- certainly in the cities, it's, you see them everywhere. But, uh, I, I would guess, you know, there's issues with parking, you know, behind the building and, you know, how, how do you make that work? I, I, I have, I haven't, and, and there's none that I can think of personally.
It may not work.
And on top of that, you've got the concern of traffic versus.
Right.
That.
That's, that's the ultimate pedestrian vehicle conflict, if, if you live at a drive-through, yeah.
Also, I would think air quality issues for people that live. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, what, I'm trying, yeah, nothing really. I think one of the things too that probably should be put sort of into the thought process of it too is that if you have a drive-through window and say a business wants to do a drive-through and so they're, you know, proposing this, one of the sort of key aspects of a drive-through window is speed. Um, and, you know, we actually, and when I say speed, I mean that whatever it is that you're creating or you're giving out that window should take a, a finite amount of time to do in order to create a, um, good experience for a drive-through. So banking, you know, generally, I mean, I've gone in drive-throughs with banking, you can, it's, you know, it can be like a five to ten process. But anything that's gonna ca- take twenty minutes, fifteen minutes is going to be wearing on the customers and it's going to cause more problems, um, as far as if you have a, a sidewalk situation. So drive-through kind of runs in tandem with speed, um, and agility essentially, as far as flexibility on where you can put things. So that's always kind of been a, one of the aspects, so whatever business it might be that's looking at something like that, you would have to include, if you're, if you're coming up with, how would you, what would be the requirements for a drive-through business? Um, the product itself has to be able to be created or brought out to that window quickly.
One, just quick thing, I don't know, um, Paul Allen from CDS was supposed to be here tonight, I don't know if he's under a different email of Fran or Kim. Is Paul here?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand if you're here, okay, I just don't wanna exclude him if he's on someone else's Zoom account.
With regard to societal changes post-COVID and whatever, you're, what I heard is that you wish to have rapid preparation of the order to, to deliver to the person in the vehicle at the window at the appropriate time separation from their, uh, from their microphone order. That doesn't, that, that doesn't include the preorder on the phone though. So what happened, uh, it is, is the phone pre-ordered through your app not as popular? Because what I, what I could see happening is there'd be a whole group of people, uh, and increasing over time of placing their order when they hit the corner on their way to the store so that they've adjusted the time gap back from the stack from the window back. So that it'll be ready when they get there.
Right, I've had people order in the drive-through. So they literally order their stuff in the drive-through. Um, so, com- our company and probably Dunkin' Donuts as well has a, it gives you a little like notice, your order will be ready in five minutes or your order will be by, by this time. And of course, that's not in fact always the case based on the, what's, the elements happening inside the store at the time. Um, however, yes. Myself and Chris probably agree, the customer figures it out, they do what is most comfortable for them. Um, and they will make the system work for them in whatever way that they need to and so, um, again, our mobile order and pay is, you know, thirty percent of our business and the drive-through is sixty and it's really just about not wanting to get out of your car and not wanting to have to wait inside a building with other people. Um, but they still order it on their app and then wait in line. So they just don't wanna get out of the car. Um, and they can be on their phone, they can be working, yeah.
That speaks to what we're talking about.
I think, I know, I know, I, I, I know for myself, I, I agree, you know, with Winnie's comments, I mean, I don't, um, what we see across the board is that, um, the, in terms of the mobile order, again, I mean, if you're someone that wants to order on your phone, uh, you know, usually they find, again, now, now we are, we're peppered quite a bit, you know, so it's a bit, maybe a bit different than, you know, uh, than even Starbucks in that area, although in, in mass Starbucks is everywhere too. But, um, they find the walk-in stores, they generally, the walk-in store apps, uh, the app usage is, is triple. Uh, sometimes twice as much as a drive-through. If I'm gonna do, if I'm gonna order on the phone, I gotta, I'll, I'll walk in and get it and leave. Why am I gonna go to a drive-through store and wait and, you know, to see, maybe there's a lot of cars, maybe there's not, you don't know. But if you're gonna place an order ahead of time, why wouldn't you just order one where you know you can just park, walk right in and get out? So the walk-in stores really dominate that part of the business, uh, at least to me, I would guess it's the same for you guys, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it kind of cancels itself out.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are all familiar with the Starbucks in Old Sabre, correct?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah, sixty, Christine, who's the manager there, um, their mobile order and pay is sixty percent of their business. Sixty percent, and it used to be half, half, like, you know, forty percent and then COVID hit and they did the hand-off plane. We call it a hand-off plane because that's what it basically is. It's now sixty percent of their business.
Yeah, that, that situation, the situation you spoke of, of, you know, is someone gonna jump in line and, and do that, it, it doesn't really work. It doesn't, that person is, if, if they're in a rush, then, then they'll, again, they'll go to the, the store down the street from us, right in the corner, they're in the plaza and they'll just walk in, get it and walk out. That's faster, that's faster than placing the order and, and maybe getting to the store and waiting in line in the drive-through to finally get there, just to say, give me my stuff. Might as well just, just went, went by the speaker and ordered it and got your stuff, 'cause you gotta wait in that line anyway.
Right, but a lot of people, a lot of people work in their car, they're on their phone in their car, we hear conversations all the time, they're working from, they're in their office, like, literally, that's what's happening, you know? We're probably, you, Chris and I are probably the anomaly because, well, I am anyway, because I work out of a building, uh, every day. But most people now work either from home, they work in an office, but they go get their coffee, they go get their food, they go get their, you know, CBS, they go get their prescriptions and they're on their car phone. You know, and they don't wanna wait in line because they can't really talk privately on their phone in line in the store. Um, and everyone's, it's all, it's all, you know, phones now and everyone's chatting, so as far as Old Sabre is concerned, that's still gonna be something that you guys have to move towards and the, and you know, for, you know, the, uh, the millennials, you know, they pay with their phones, they talk on their phones, they do everything, everything is all combined into one thing. Um, so it, it will be the way it, it works down the line.
I think, I think as well to, uh, to, to Winnie's points that if you feel like, you know, people don't mind waiting as long because waiting, they're, they're looking at their phone, especially these young kids, I mean,
No, they don't care.
There's, if there's fifteen cars in line, it's okay, I got time, I'm gonna be on my, wherever I'm going, I'm gonna be on my phone anyway. I might as well just sit here and be on my phone while I'm waiting to get my car.
Yeah, they will, yeah, that's, that is the other change too, is, is people, the good thing for people that wanna open a drive-through in a, in a town is that that hurdle of the, well, I'm gonna wait ten minutes and the customers are getting upset, um, that's over. Uh, COVID kind of gave us permission to have these long drive-throughs and have these long wait times to do this because people have adapted and that's a real thing. People have actually adapted to that and I've watched it, I mean, I see it every single day, it's crazy, but, um, you know, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, um, if there's a problem at the window and people are waiting, they'll wait. So having a drive-through window, not just an accessory window, but actually creating a building that has a drive-through window, the idea that there's this sort of like anxiety about there being the customer not waiting, they will wait now because society has changed their outlook on, on what that is to be in a drive-through now.
I agree. They, they don't leave, I mean, like, like I said, it used to be, years ago, you see a big stack, everyone's mad, they gotta rush, they gotta get to work and they're out, they're pulling out, it's just, now, you're just there and, and everybody's looking at their phone. You know, they're on TikTok and they're swiping and, and they turn, then they get their stuff, it's, it's young kids.
Oh, yeah, and especially now that things cost so much more, they don't care. So they've already bought a drink, they're not gonna leave because they're gonna waste, you know, eight bucks, nine bucks, so they're just gonna sit and wait in line. And this includes adults with kids in the car and the whole nine, everything, so.
Wow. So what, what would be your thoughts on, um, rather than having drive-through space, drive-through space, drive-through space throughout a, a length of road, what if they were all bunched up on one big property?
I mean, like different, different companies on one big property?
Right.
That's very, um, that's very sort of, uh.
That's, that's, I, I, I can't wrap my head around the concept.
I mean, it's not, it, I mean, you see.
Then if you have somebody who likes Dunkin' and somebody who likes Starbucks, they think it's, you know, they could.
There's different things from every place.
They're across, they're across the street from each other anyway, I mean, it's, it's, you know.
I know.
They gotta stop and see David the bank first.
That's very, uh, yeah, the Jetsons right there, like have different things, like everyone just reading in and out of each other, um. Well, no, but that's what's happening, that's what's happening, I mean, you know, like, it, you know, people go to different places for different things and they go through drive-throughs all the time, I mean, you know, I shudder to think how many times I took my four kids through McDonald's in East Lime, I mean, it's like, it's frightening to me, even think about it, but, um, but you know, this is kind of the way it's going and, and it is profitable for towns, I will say that because, um, you know, the, you do have, you know, a high rate of business um, and it brings people to the town, I mean, that is the other thing too, it brings customers.
Not if, not if they don't get out of their car, it doesn't. They just, they drive in and they drive out.
Yeah, well, I mean, it does bring, um, you know, I know that East Lime is trying to do some work and Niantic's trying to, you know, add some stores and stuff like that, so, um, you know, we have a high tourist off of the highway and stuff like that, but it does bring, you know, speaking from the perspective of someone that had four children at once, I had two sets of twins in two years. Um, I could not get out of my car easily, ever. Um, so for what, a good eight years, I drove through drive-throughs a lot because I couldn't physically get out of my car with all my children safely, let's just put it that way. Um, so, you know, when you put drive-throughs in, you bring another, you bring another, um, you know, clientele, um, to the, to the game, um, so, but yeah, you definitely wanna have that be, you know, definitely having that, that window is primary um, and having, you know, speed be an issue, stacking be an issue, what does the footprint look like? And you guys have to determine for Old Sabre, like what would be the best thing for the town? But the cu- as far as the customer is concerned, if they like the product, they will come and they will, they just, they will, they will definitely, they'll wait, so, um.
I would agree, I know, so, uh, so in my community, so the town that I live in, we have, it's, it's similar to Route One and I got a, I have a, 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 an old friend who used to turn into a Dunkin' a couple of years ago, walk-in store. And in the next town over, we have a drive-through, my town doesn't, they, they don't, they don't want it, a smaller town and, um, and, uh, everybody I know goes to the, they go to the next town, they, they don't go to, so the store we have sitting there, the front, these big beautiful stores, seating, all that, nope, everybody, my, my wife included, right past it, right to the next town over to go, to go to the window, you know, but the town doesn't want it and you're kind of saying to yourself, hey, there's obviously a want for this town, a lot, a lot of families, moms don't wanna get out of the car, they wanna do their thing, uh, even have a, you know, some walk-up like makeshift, uh, cleaners places. They, they actually open and they'll bring, they'll drop the cleaners right in your car for that, you know? Uh, but they, but they won't do the Dunkin', so it's, it's something that, you know, for you guys, you guys got your work ahead of you, but it is, you know, it's, it's what's coming. You know, it's it's what's coming and it's what people want, you know. Uh, we I do believe that, you know, because if you open it, they show up, they're all there. I mean, it's. You know.
Yeah, I mean, you have a different, you know, customer today. They have, we have, the more dogs come through our drive-through than I can even tell you. Um, dogs are in people's cars twenty-four seven. Um, they go walk their dog. They can't bring the dog in the store. So they get into their car and they drive through the drive-through. The drive-through is a phenomenal place for people who are single, who don't want to go out and interact with people. Who have their dog with them. They go right through, they get their coffee and they're gone. And they're still spending money, you know, every day. And these are regular customers. Um, you know, but yeah, I definitely looking at like. I mean, it's the way things are going, you know, and not everybody likes it. I understand that and. But it is kind of the nature of business as far as. Things that people are looking to get every day. Sometimes I wish you could do it at the grocery store, to be honest with you.
Well, this has been very helpful.
Yes.
Very helpful, very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. And come visit all our stores and you'll see.
Chris has a lot of stores to go visit though.
Yeah, the one, but you'll get a real drive-through experience.
Stay tuned. We have, we learned a lot. Thank you. And we will incorporate it, but we're we're gonna end up with. Land use regulations which will accommodate some of what you've described us as the trend. And yet, and yet we're still cognizant that we're trying to do something that's good for the town.
Yes.
And and yeah, bringing business is one thing, but bringing vehicles that drive in and drive out. May not be the best thing for the town. So by put by by putting things in the right places, we'll try to achieve a balance.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right, so um. Want to look at the rough draft once over and um. Hit the rough spots and come back for fine tuning and another time.
I mean, it's really up to you. I just took a bunch of ideas and.
Well, Chris's email said that she received only two comments from people ahead of time.
So I have.
And now that we've had this, all right, we're gonna, I'll sign it to everybody again. That this this time you don't get to say you're waiting for more information if you were, but. This time before our next meeting, you you have to fill in the blanks with numbers, pick a number if there's two. Or make up a new one and um. Figure out uh some finer points and um incorporate.
And there may be things in here you absolutely don't like. So I mean, this was just trying to pull from different places and different ideas, just something to start with.
It's a starting pair.
It's pretty clear that these restaurants. It's a way different. How many banks we have? They're not even a problem, really. Maybe because of the location too, but this this whole restaurant, these people are just in a world of, they don't even know what goes on outside the building. Just. Just how long does it take to get the donut ready? It's a whole different thing for them. They don't even think about the traffic problems and.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, yeah.
So how many of those do we want?
So I would, I would say things that I would look for comments on is uh is a drive-through food service thing. Uh, allowed as a principal use or must it be accessory? And um, we have a minimum building size of seven hundred fifty square feet, which is big enough for Dunkin'. But is, will that be necessary in the future? Should we stay with that for the future use of the land? Should should the the wind, the drive-through window business go away? What do you do with a building that's. Made only for a drive-through window except wait for another drive-through window to fill it?
Yeah.
Whereas if you had a eight hundred and fifty square foot building, there would be a lot more use for for it. To fulfill. So. Principal versus accessory required is that is a key decision point, I would say. Um. How many drive-throughs at what density? Mostly same lot? Distance separating different lots? That's another big consideration. And uh, that onsite traffic flow. Um, I think we'll eventually come up with this either discussion with the traffic consultant or. The people who have experience, like we've heard about the police department likes this layout. That we we can pick a preferred layout.
They like the, they park there because it's good visibility to see people, not as far as the banking part of it.
No, no.
It's part of the observing.
Yeah, nothing to do with the bank.
We, I think we should, I think we should have a picture of what would be a good layout. And what would be an acceptable layout and what would be unacceptable. So, so we don't get, so we don't make things worse.
Yeah.
It seems, I'm just kind of brainstorming here because you're gonna send me comments. It seems that pharmacies. And banks have less of a.
Stacking.
Stacking demand.
Yeah, I disagree with pharmacy. Because.
Well, C V S.
Depending on, we only have one and their stacking is adequate, but if you've noticed in the last. Five, six weeks that that because of the outbreaks with flu and everything else. Lot is full and the drive-through is wrapped around the front of the building.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the afternoon, in the afternoon.
And I don't go in.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Cars are.
It's almost. I would say that the pharmacy would be similar to um a fa- a food establishment in terms of that. Obviously, the location here is adequate, like David said about his facility, which I use frequently. And you never have a problem. But if there was another pharmacy to come in, I think that has to be given the same consideration as as the as the food.
To me, that's different. You're right.
And because more and more is going to to that. I mean, if the C V S person was here this evening, they probably would indicated that. That business is equal to the sixty percent that the coffees.
Yeah.
Places are experiencing.
And so that comes, that, yeah, I do, we impact that by.
Particularly when you're, particularly when, you know, someone is is sick or ill and they 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 want to go and get their prescriptions. They don't want to go inside.
Right.
Right, so it's only.
If you could keep the sick people outside in their cars, that would probably be better, yeah.
Right, wow.
All right, so, but we we would impact that by a separation distance of the window from the curb cut.
Right.
And the stacking space on the on the lot would have to also be considered as a separate thing to be separated from the curb cut. And so that that's where land regulation comes into these businesses. They'll survive. They'll figure out a way.
Right.
My, I I look at Google Earth for the Starbucks in East Line and I thought, oh, that's pretty good. They come in off of the main thoroughfare. Uh, that that goes up to Flanders, right? And then they could go out to that service road that goes up to the D O T garage. But the town said, no, they shut that one.
They shut the one.
Right?
So.
They did.
Seems to me that that would have worked, but I guess it didn't. So. Yeah, but they were leaving at a traffic light. That's the thing that.
Well, that traffic light is.
That's probably what backed it up.
Winning the section. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a mess.
So do you want to send me comments and I'll keep just trying to?
This time I'll send you comment.
I'll keep whittling away, you know, away at something.
The other thing I heard out of it is both from the bank as well as the other two, is that the square footage of a building. Is a lot less now.
Getting smaller, yes.
Getting smaller and smaller.
Yes. Well, that's why I brought up housing because a bank, I don't, I don't know if banks are amenable to having people live over the vault. Whatever, but uh, it seems like a bank with a, like Guilford Savings Bank with a beautiful semi-residential style building. They could shrink their floor space on the first floor and put residential in.
They could, yeah.
I mean, there's other regulations.
But I think there's a good point about the idling and the noise. I mean, if.
Bank that over a smelly restaurant.
But it smells coffee all the time and, yeah, wow.
You're right.
Or exhaust fumes.
If they're roasting coffee, it's a whole different.
Your window in the summer and.
Has a good spot because you can actually park and go into the bank without. Going across the drive-through.
Right, that's.
I mean, that for multi-use, mixed use, people are protected. They don't have to go across.
By keeping.
So.
Yeah, that's the worst one. That's the nightmare.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're gonna have to request.
Yeah, so you're, what I think, what if we just keep this on the agenda? Kind of a last minute item that we have to go through this. Your next meeting.
When is the next meeting?
It's Wednesday as well.
Another Wednesday.
So you have a special exception.
Wednesday, the eighteen.
Yes.
I could, I could participate by Zoom.
Which is the third Wednesday. When is that? Oh, that's the second Wednesday. Okay.
What do we have on?
So you have a special exception for a house in the gateway. I expect you're gonna have some public participation for that one if they get through Z B A.
For for which I I don't.
It's a house in the gateway.
Okay.
Conservation zone. You have fine fettle. Which you will get folks out and you will have Oasis if all goes. Is planned. So Oasis would be they, you'll have to open the first night of the public hearing. But you won't be able to, they're out of time unless they give an extension. But the Wetlands Commission doesn't meet till the nineteenth, so that one would have to get continued.
Yeah, that one will have to.
Unless they, so what I'll do is I'll just keep adding this to the end of the agenda. If you can send me comments, I'll try to.
Okay.
Flip them in and. Just. Go from there, have something to start with. And then just to. The six is pretty open depending on. Whatever gets continued from the other meeting, which probably could work for a workshop. Um, but you also have a petition to amend the regulations for cannabis cultivation.
I wrote about that today.
So you're.
Oh, was that in the examiner? I'm gone on February sixth.
So we'll just try to plug away.
You're going when?
He's going to Aruba.
Again?
Yeah.
Same time of year.
Good for you. Yeah.
Go to the beach with a with a.
Drive-through with Wi-Fi, you could set it zoom into the meeting from the drive-through.
Not alcoholic.
Got them with Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, will that day come? You can order, order, order up a beer or.
Sure.
We're doing, well, we're not supposed to be driving while you're doing. Put the window on the other side. So with regard to their earlier meeting this evening, that's all hypothetical stuff that they're. Putting forth now in order to incorporate into a legislation proposal.
So apparently they're gonna propose and last year they proposed the public act that they said, that I know you and I reviewed pretty intensively.
Um, yeah, because they had up there the things they learned from the one that didn't make it last year. And then another one last year never got out of committee and.
So I think this is more of a P R piece to fill everybody in versus reacting, but. The reality of it is until we actually see the draft bill.
Yeah.
You know, I I mean, the one thing that I think is gonna be an issue is. That if you don't opt in, you don't get discretionary funding for infrastructure.
Right, it's unclear to to what degree does that funding from the state get affected? Is it everything? You could get caught off entirely.
Yeah, that's the way it looks at the screen.
Yeah, yeah. And the decision as to whether or not to do that would be made by the Board of Select. They would.
And yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, put it on the Board of Select, but we aren't gonna do that.
No, just just review, yeah, just reviewing what I heard. Okay.
Yeah, so anyway, okay, that's interesting. We'll just watch the act.
Okay.
But otherwise.
Anything else?
I don't really have anything else for you if you want to move to your chairman.
Good, motion to adjourn. Old Sable?
You're not, you're not.